All right, we're going to call the meeting in order. All right, everybody listen up, take your seats. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, September 29th, 2025. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councillor Ortale, Councillor Sheffield, Councillor Norris, are present.
Okay, so new business referral, parks and rec, accept facilities, hardware donation. Walter, if you could come up, both of you, and then make sure you're... Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get you introduced in just a moment. Hold on, Walter, I'm go, I'm going to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cue it and then I'll turn it over to you. So you can please, both set, you're good. Have a seat, make sure the button's green. Okay, so for the council during the budget, we have authorized expenditure funds to redo structures in the, in the park. And Walter is a member of the Southeastern Connecticut Plumbing, Heating, Cooling and Cooling Contractors. And so he brought a proposal to me, and I think it's a good proposal, I'm gonna bring it to the council and see if council will agree and will accept this. So Walter, now I'll kick it over to you. You have the floor.
I'm the local chapter treasurer. We do these jobs periodically over time. One of the biggest things we did was the Amistad. Our association did all the work there for nothing. We donated all our time, and we're just looking for something else to do. Went through COVID and nothing was happening, so now we're back into it. We'd like to give back to society. The chapter president is here, James Brown, and I'll, I'll let him explain what we're gonna propose to do.
Thank you, Walt. What we would like to do in the, in the park, when you guys are gonna remodel the bathrooms, we'd like to donate our time, remove the fixtures, reinstall the fixtures. We'll donate our labor and everything, you know, free, but we would want the town, the city, to pay for the materials that we use. But we, we talked to the association already, our membership, and everybody's on board. So we come forward today to see if that's something you guys would like us to do. And it's something we wanna do, because we enjoy the park, we wanna give back to society, like Walt said. This is something that our association does, so that's why we're here today.
So we would have this group go do the inventory, Walter's already started that, and he may have completed it today, to find out what can be reused and what can't be reused. And then for those materials that need to be replaced, the city would get a list, and the city would purchase those materials. And then as part of the renovation, these guys would come in and do the plumbing side of the renovations, and therefore we would take that out of the RFP. And the RFP would be structural and roof and painting and those kind of things only. So this would, in theory, would save us some significant money on the proposal. So they came to me, I said, let me, let me vet it, I think it's a good idea, and so I'm bringing it to council. So with that, I'll open the floor for discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments? Councillor Sheffield.
Have you already given like an anticipated amount for materials that it would take for the cost of the city?
Yeah, to best of my knowledge, no, but we can work that up. But it'll, it'll be basically just like gaskets, just little miscellaneous pieces and parts, because we're hoping to reuse a lot of the fixtures that are there in place. We'll be putting new flush valves on, so new faucets, but the china, like the actual sinks and the toilets, we'd like to reuse them, because they're in good shape. There's no need to replace them, clean them up, put new seals on them. I know I'm talking plumbing talk and everything, but get it so it's functional. It does need, you know, new flush valves and stuff like that.
How many workers would you need to do the job?
Well, we, our whole association is on board with this, and we had a vote, and everyone's on board. So I would say at any given time, we could have 10 to 12 guys there to help. You know, more hands, make lighter work, so we can, you know, get this job done and stick with the schedule.
And so compensation for those workers that help you out will come from?
Everyone's donating their time. It's different companies in the, in the area in Southeastern Connecticut, and they, they, they will donate their time. So we've done this in the past, we've done Ocean Beach Park, where they provided all the fixtures, they replaced the fixtures there, and the miscellaneous hardware and pieces and parts. And we donated our time and come together. And it's actually a fun time for us guys, because we get to work together, we know each other, and we're giving back to something that we believe in, because we all enjoy the park, you know, on Fridays when they have the concerts or whatever, just coming here to relax. So we'd like to see it look beautiful, you know, give, you know, give something back some pride in our community.
Are you a city resident, by the way?
I am not city resident, but I do work in the City of Groton.
Okay.
And I live in Gales Ferry, I was born and raised in Stonington, but I live in Gales Ferry, and that's where I operate my business from, too.
Okay, thank you, sure.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being willing, you know, I was just talking to someone the other day. It's important for us to try to get grants and other sources of funding for things as everything gets more expensive. So this is a great creative way to get some stuff done without, you know, digging into the property taxes. Can you repeat again the name of, what's the name of your group or the association?
It's the Connecticut Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors, we're the Southeast Chapter. We're a three-tiered association, there's a national, there's a state, and then there's locals.
Okay, and so you still would have to, have to do the assessment, so you're not even sure of the scope of the work yet, correct?
We have a scope of the work as an actual nuts and bolts of what it's gonna take to complete it. We have an idea, but it's not right down to the exact.
Okay, and then this has to be voted on at a future mayor and council meeting, right?
It should be moved.
And what, what's the timeline for this project again?
Is what I'm gonna ask the council to do is to accept, accept these services as a donation, just like you would any other donation. And it's for their time. The city, the city will, will purchase the equipment that is required, and then this association will do the installation, the removal, the installation, everything that they need to do. I got a brief this, this morning, this afternoon, actually, that the hardware, not the hardware, the porcelain, the ceramic bowls and urinals and those kind of things are in really good shape. Some of them, they need to be cleaned up, but we can clean them up. There's chemicals that could be used to clean those up. We'd like to keep those, because if you go back to the way those were made, they're in better, they are, were made better than what we're buying now. What you buy now is thinner and doesn't hold up as well. So I was, one of the expectations is that they're gonna go into, to refurbish these things, and they'll reuse what they can use. The flush valves are probably the big thing. And so, so that's where we're gonna go with this. Deputy Mayor Depot.
And then what, what's the timeline for this project? When are we gonna?
Well, the RFP is, is not out yet, we just got prevailing wage. So as soon as we can, probably in the next couple of weeks, maybe a month, next couple of weeks, we'll put out the RFP, and then we'll ask for, we'll probably do another walkthrough, right? For the other guys, for the?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that one was, that one may have been just an optional walkthrough. I'm not sure if that one was mandatory, I'll have to double check. First time it was mandatory, but this one may be optional.
But we could, do we, and, and we're gonna have to, we'll get from the contractors when they think they can remodel so that we can coordinate these efforts, right?
Correct, yeah, once, once the bids go out, come in, we'll get it, and the contractors award, we'll work with a timeframe and make sure everybody's in agreement.
Because one of the things I, or I think one of the things you and I talked about was coordinating with these guys so that, you know, let you guys remove it, let them come in, paint, remodel, get all of that done. And then that way, they're not painting over your artwork you guys put in.
We'd like to come in and last, we'd like to come in last, because it'll all be painted, we'll put the grab bars back up, and, you know, the toilets back on the walls, the sink, urinals.
And, and the good news is, right now, they're typically shut down in the wintertime anyway. So that way, there's minimal negative impact, because we're not having a bunch of sports real little league or anything like that. So it will be coordinated, we will do it, once we get the bid, we'll get a timeline together and put it out.
Sounds good, thank you.
We already have the faucets for the sinks already.
And those were donated, right?
Has already donated them. So we've already started the ball rolling, even though you're not accepting it.
Okay, Councillor Norris.
Thank you, Mayor, if you can just catch me up on some stuff here. So has the RFP and the scope been generated and out on the street?
It's been generated, it was supposed to be posted last week. However, we're waiting for the state, for the prevailing wage form, it got delayed for some reason. So we just got that in the end of last week, so we just need to update the dates in that, and it will be going out within the next week or so. But all the scope is in there and has been reviewed by the department.
So within the scope, does it, has what they're graciously saying they would do been eliminated from the scope?
Correct.
Or is it in there as an alternate, just eliminated?
It's just been pulled out, and then, yeah.
All right, thank you.
That way we get, the reason we did that was to try to get an accurate bid on just the renovation of the buildings themselves, the roof, the painting, any construction work that needs to go on, and, and pull out all the plumbing. That way, these guys will be doing that.
Right, so let's say a contractor comes back, they get awarded the bid, or even if they're awarded, are they being told, because I'm assuming there may be a JC, a GC, sorry, that they need to work with these guys? Or is it, how does that work?
We'll probably just coordinate that with the timing from the city side, and not really have the GC involved. It'll just be like, when do they, when does the GC plan to start the project? Let them come in, remove what they need to remove to get out of the way, they'll step back, the contractor will come in, do whatever they need to do, and then they'll come in at the end and replace the faucets and the fixtures.
And the last question I have is, are these folks, could it be held to the insurance requirements that of a contractor?
They, there won't, there'll be the volunteer waiver form that will have for that, but I don't know that there'll be insurance requirements per se, but we can look into something on that.
Just curious.
Yeah, as of right now, that hasn't been discussed, but we can look into it, just to see if it is something, but most likely it will not.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you guys, thank you for coming out, and thanks for offering this, that's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Yep, you too.
Okay, the next one is to accept the Connecticut Sun donation, so we're in year two. We've received a $25,000, and so I'm here to talk to you guys, and, and again, donations that we have to accept through council. So this was planned, it's part of the MOU, that was part of your, your backup, so this should be pretty easy. Any questions or comments? Councillor Norris.
So how much do we currently have in this account of collected monies from the Connecticut Sun?
Be just whatever that first year donation was, and then there was the donation from AB. We did set that money aside in a special revenue fund, I don't remember what's in there at this point in time, but it would have been those two donations that would build that fund up.
Okay, let me phrase, so of the $60,000 for friscal year, it looks like in '24, have we spent any of that?
We have not, if you recall, the basketball courts were redone with ARPA, and the decision was to put that money away for future repairs. And one of the things that we did talk about was the potential for using some of them funds for the security cameras for that area. So, but as of right now, none of that has been spent.
All right, and then we have here that in '26, so I see it, it's highlighted here, $25,000 team operations budget in '25, that's now, right?
Yes.
So what would happen to that $26,000, $25,000 if the Connecticut Sun was to vacate the state in the next six months? There is chatter of that.
Well, there is chatter, but when I talk to the people that I've, that I've talked to, even if they were, if we're given an offer today, it would take them a year to do it. And then the second part, when I talk to my attorney, the attorney said this rides, should ride with, with the team. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Harbor Management Commission, Terry, you wanna come up? So this is the mooring fee increase. I have Terry Sang, who is the Chair of the Harbor Management Commission, and Jeff Desick, who is the Harbor Master here. Terry has prepared a presentation which was in your pack. Hey, Terry, you have the floor.
Okay, great, thank you so much, I'm sorry. Haven't done this in a while. Good evening, everybody. My name is Terry Sang, I chair the Harbor Management Commission. Our commissioners, including our Harbor Master and our city liaison, everyone is part of the commission. We are all here in attendance. So we are here to propose a mooring fee adjustment for the City of Groton. My presentation only got four slides, very concise, very brief. I do want to ask you to hold on to your questions until the presentation is over. I think it's more efficient that way. Okay, mooring fee proposals, we have two proposals. The first one is to increase the mooring fee from $50 to $100, exclusive of fees. The second proposal that we have is to establish a revised fee schedule, specifically $100 for new moorings, $75 for renewals, and $25 for waiting list. If approved, we plan on implementing the new fees next year, boating season. If you look at the right-hand side of the slide, there are a couple pictures of moorings, in case you have not seen one. In the middle, it's a satellite picture of our beautiful Pine Island Bay. If you look at those white dots in the middle, it's either boats or moorings, okay? That's where all the moorings are situated. Some of the moorings are owned by us, while others are owned by a local yacht club and a local marina. Okay, this is the current situation. In the City of Groton, we charge a flat rate of $50. We don't care about new moorings or renewal, flat rate, $50. This fee has been around since 2014, we have not made any adjustment for 11 years. If you look at other local municipalities, they are charging $100 for new moorings, $75 for renewal, $25 for waiting list. The legal basis for the mooring fee is coming from Connecticut General Statutes, Section 228-113S. Basically, this law allows the Harbor Management Commission to charge mooring fees as long as the annual maximum is not more than $200. And any changes, any increases, we have to come here to get your approval, and that's why we are here tonight. I also want to clarify that mooring fee is not a tax, it's not a public levy, it's actually a user fee. If you have a boat, you like to anchor your vessels, you pay the money, and you're all set. It's voluntary, it's conditional, if you don't have a boat, nothing to pay. In terms of, in terms of justification and benefits, before we came up with the proposal, we did investigate this, we looked at a couple of things. The first thing is, we look at other shoreline communities and see how much they charge. Specifically, we look at Mystic, Stonington, Eastline, Waterford, and we went as far as Osabrow. The magic number is $100 for new moorings, okay? So we thought it's pretty reasonable to make the adjustment. The other thing that we look at is cost. We are responsible for putting in a number of things, like no wake zone, to give you an example. At the beginning of the boating season, when we put the no wake buoy in, it cost $375. At the end of the season, we got to remove it, that's another $375. We also have other safety markers to be installed, to be maintained, and also when it comes to mooring, there are maintenance costs as well. So when we look at the budget, we notice one thing, we notice one trend. The cost is rising, it's going up, it's escalating, okay? I guess it's nothing new, right, inflation and high labor cost. So we thought there's a need to adjust our mooring fee to compensate for that. Another thing is, we have a very dedicated individual running the commission, we got great plans, we got wonderful things to do for our community. We actually wanted to modernize and maximize the mooring field. We also got plans to update our harbor management plan, which is actually close to about 20 years old, okay? The other thing that we are considering is to engage our community, to collaborate with other commissions, to come up with educational and community outreach initiatives, okay? All these activities require resources, we need money. So we thought, instead of coming to here to ask you to give you a big headache, we should be able to become self-sufficient by adjusting the mooring fee. Another way to look at this, it's really a community reinvestment. We use the money that we got, reinvest in the community to benefit our community. And in the overall scheme of things, $100 for mooring, it's a very sweet deal, it's for a boating season. So we look at this as like a win-win proposition. Okay, this is our last slide, so we are here to seek your endorsement to increase the mooring fee from $50 to $100. We are also seeking your endorsement to establish a revised fee schedule, specifically for those amounts. And before I close, I'd like to thank our commission members for putting this proposal together, for a wonderful job. Specifically, I also like to thank our Harbor Master, he's been instrumental and pivotal in driving this proposal coming forward, so thank you, Jeff. And now I leave the floor open for questions.
Okay, we'll open the floor for council discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to say, I saw this on the agenda, and most of the questions that came to mind were in your slides, so it's very thorough, so I really appreciate that, because one of the things I was gonna ask is if you compared it to other local towns. How many moorings do we have that we manage?
I believe we have about... So there's 119 city moorings, 72 commercial moorings, and, well, 72 plus 39. Yacht Club has 39, Pine Island has 72, and the city has 119.
And do we always, are they all always occupied every year, or how, is there like a percentage that are or not, or?
Probably about 50%, maybe a little bit less, and part of the problem is, and what, what part of the investment's going to be, is in trying, when we talk about maximizing mooring field, is trying to pinpoint where these locations are and what's usable, and be able to put the proper boats in these positions.
Okay.
So that's been, that's been lacking over the years, but we've, coming up with plans to do that, but it takes extra money.
And do we think that increasing the fee will reduce the number of people applying for moorings at all? Okay. So do we, have we found ourselves, do we ever have to turn someone away from, from a mooring?
Yes, late, past several years, not being able to position a boat properly has been a hindrance, and we're, I'm, I've been looking to have that hindrance taken away so that we can maximize the mooring field.
And this, this proposal will sufficiently fund that?
At this point, yes, I believe it will.
Okay, and my last question is for the Finance Director. Where in our city budget is this budget?
It is not in the city budget. There was a special revenue fund that was set up for the harbor management quite a few years back now, so the money all goes into that special revenue fund, and then anything that is purchased for harbor management comes out of that fund. So all of these user fees are used to pay for the costs associated with the harbor management.
So there is not somewhere that a city resident can look and see what's coming in or being spent in harbor management?
There's reports that can be run for that, but you would not see it in our, in the city budget. It used to be in the city budget before that special revenue fund was created. It was part of a boards and commissions budget. But right now, it would just be, it would have to be a report that came out of finance, because in the financials, it's grouped under miscellaneous special revenue funds, it's part of a bunch of different other funds.
If I may add to that, the, the reason that it is a special fund is that it's a state statute that the Harbor Commission establishes, establishes its own fund, collects its fees, and it stays and maintains in there for harbor management programs and management, specifically. It does not go into the city budget at all.
That way it doesn't get raided.
Right, I understand that.
The CGS is very specific.
Right.
So what was the budget, or I suppose what's the budget for this current year? And then what will potentially this change increase it to?
Well, go ahead. There is no budget. We have a self-sufficient fund that we've been working with for, since 2014 anyways, and earlier than that.
And by the way, to answer your questions, the team is building a budget. We're trying to develop a budget based on historic numbers and also future fees. So we are working on it, but we don't have it yet, yeah.
So then maybe this is kind of a stupid question, but without a budget, how do you decide how to spend your money each year, or where to?
We really haven't been spending the money, so it's been accruing, and there's been little, for example, we find a rogue mooring that needs to be removed for $250. The commit, the commission has authorized me to go ahead and hire a, we have a contractor that would take that mooring out that's causing a navigational problem or a danger to the boating community, and we would put the invoice in, and then it would come out of that harbor management fund. So annually, we maybe spend $800 at the most. And this is the first time that we've actually put together different projects that we need, like we got the no wake buoy in there, now we know... Like, we got the no wake buoy in there, now we know we have some established costs to maintain that no wake buoy. Right.
Okay. I, I think it's a, it is sensible after eleven years to raise the rates. And obviously, our rates were lower than neighboring communities, so I'm in favor of, of the change. And I, um, again, appreciate all the hard work and all the commission members for showing up. Um, I know that everyone is busy, so I really appreciate it when people come to the meetings. Um, because when we do have questions, it's so much easier to get the answers from the people that are making the decisions. So, um, you know, I just wanna say thank you guys all for, for showing up. Um, I would like, um, like I said, I'm in favor of this proposal. I would like it if we could get from the finance department, um, whatever the last report is, just for our own knowledge and information. Um, that way, if city residents have questions, we can answer them.
I've already noted that.
Thank you.
The, the other thing that, that the commission has warranted, even back when I was the chair, that we tried to get, we didn't have the money at the time. But we're looking to go out there and, and basically do a microgrid. And with GPS coordinates, so that we can come up with a brand-new grid. And we're gonna have to hire an outside group to go do that, to do the grid, and then to reestablish some of the moorings. Some of the moorings have migrated over the years due to tidal action and things like that. And one of the challenges we have is, based on where the moorings have migrated, you might not be able, with the swing arcs. Uh, with the, with the, with the anchor, with the chain, with the, the, the length of the boat, and then the swing arc. You gotta be careful so that you don't run two boats together. So, if they can finally get to a point, and then at, because it's gonna be over, well, it'll be, well, now, we're not, we're not at ten, we're twenty. But it'll be at a point where Scott would, the liaison, would bring it to the council and say. This is the company we wanna use for that, uh, when they do that proposal, and they're not quite there yet. Deputy Mayor Devoe.
I can ask one more thing of the finance director. Can you, um, provide a list of those special revenue funds for the council?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, did I see a hand over here, Councilor Sheffield?
This isn't anything for profit purposes, right? Is that, you know, to garner these fees, okay.
No, it's not.
It's just for, uh, you know, user fee, and then, of course, if you need to replace something, the money's there.
Absolutely.
Okay. We've been collecting fees since approximately two thousand and eight. Our harbor management plan was established in two thousand and six, and I think in two thousand and eight. Uh, we started with twenty-five dollars, and then in fourteen, it went to fifty, and here we are in twenty-twenty-five. So, we've been very reasonable in, in this, and this also is not, there are city residents in this mooring field. But a lot of out-of-town folks, um, are...
Okay. Now, will you, will you be evaluating these fees annually, or is this something you probably not revisit? Unless you find out another town is possibly increasing or even decreasing by chance?
I don't think it, well, I don't answer for the commission, but, uh, from my perspective, it's nice to see that we're in parity with the other towns. Um, but I think to manage our own field and make it work for us is where we're at, and there's a maximum of two hundred dollars. So, we're, we're a little bit away.
Right.
And I think a little, you know, this, and, and what, what it costs in lieu of a, a, a city mooring. Going to a, a commercial marina or any other municipality is a lot more expensive. So, you know, we, we're providing a very reasonable, um, place to keep your boat.
Yeah, exactly. We're not really jacking it up. We are really trying to align our fee with other providers. So that it's fair, it's consistent, and also by having the same rate, the peer rates matching others. It reflects our professional standard and provide the same quality of surface. You don't want people to say, wow, City of Ground is fifty dollars, everywhere else is a hundred dollars, maybe they got issues with their moorings. You don't want that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Councilor Norris?
I, I, I heard what you said, and I, first of all, thank you for taking the time to research all of this. And come forward with a very reasonable proposal. One of the beautiful things about Grand City is that I don't think we need to compare to a Stonington, or a Old Saybrook, or a Clinton. So, that's one thing. So, when we talk about, well, Stonington's a hundred, we should be a hundred, I'm not quite sold on that. But, I appreciate it, and I would also say, in that regard, would you consider a resident and a non-resident fee? Is that permissible under state statute?
Don't think it's, I have to research it, but I'm pretty sure, um, you, I don't know about the fee itself, but I know we can't only give moorings to city residents.
No, I'm not saying only give, I'm just saying...
I don't think that you can designate, um, a higher fee for item, but that would have to be something to be looked at.
Yeah, that's, because it would be really nice in the future as where, looks like. Evaluating this on a more reasonable timeframe, that if that's something that can happen. Why not, um, reward our city residents for staying here and having their boats here? Because that's what adds to the beauty of our shoreline.
We could definitely look into it, but I think right now, the fifty dollars, that's for every boat, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, every used mooring.
Yeah.
So then, you also said that, um, I saw some nods in, in the background there. When we said, like, would we lose any folks that would use a moor or pay for a moor, and we were like, no, we wouldn't lose anyone. How do we know?
Uh, from my experience when we went from twenty-five to fifty?
Yeah, but that was twenty years ago.
They, they wrote the check as fast as they can.
Okay.
The option is, let's say, a hundred dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars.
Got it. So, how much is in that special revenue account today?
Uh, twenty-four thousand dollars.
And you spend on average how much a year?
Maybe a thousand?
Yeah, under a thousand. But we have not done anything to reinvest into the mooring.
That's right, we need to modernize our moorings.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, the maintenance costs, and I think we started to put the budget together, we looked at the math. You know, in, in the wrong, in the long, longer run, long run. I mean, eventually, if we don't, uh, adjust the fee a little bit, we may run into financial issues.
Absolutely agree.
Another big project that the commission has to undertake is the revision of the harbor management plan. It was accepted in two thousand and six, it has not been updated to, to this, to today.
Right.
And there's a lot of stuff that's changed out in our harbors that need to be updated.
Right. So, I think I only have two more questions. So, one is. Um, so, the, the difference between the hundred seventy-five and the fifty-four, so that is really just gonna be set aside. For, as rainy day, to deal with some of these projects. Is that what I'm hearing? Because you're really not gonna use it, because you already got twenty-two thousand in there. So, any additional fees is gonna increase what you have on hand to handle the projects down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So then, the last question I have is, and this is a question, maybe two more for Ron. So, when we approve the budget in the spring, we are essentially also approving harbor commission's budget, no?
No, no, because there, there's, there's, it used to, is prior to that special revenue fund, it used to be in the budget. Once that revenue fund, special revenue fund was set up, we budgeted a couple of years, just while that fund was being accumulated to, um, help build it up. But the last few years, it has not been anything budgeted under harbor management.
Right.
So, there, there's no, that approval has nothing to do with harbor management.
And state statute is saying that we're the ones that approve the rates?
Right.
Okay. So then, the other question would be, why do we not do this during the budget process?
Hold on, let me ask your, I wanna ask your question this way. The, can we go back to the slide that says what the CGS says?
Slide number one, I think, or number two.
There we go. So, they can, they have to, the town's legislative body that approved the harbor management plan.
Right.
Is the one that has to approve increases in the mooring fees.
And Grand City Council is the one that approves the plan?
Correct. And then, in the future, this commission will be, uh, the harbor management plan. Has not been revised since...
Two thousand and six.
Since I had it, right?
Yeah.
So, when I, so, I was the chair of the harbor management commission. And brought it to the council for approval of our initial harbor management plan. That plan has not been updated since then, and it needs to be updated. And, uh, what we're finding, what they are finding, is that, uh, a lot of other commissions. Are using outside organizations to help them revise it, because they're more familiar with all the requirements than some of the local guys.
Got it.
And there, so therefore, there will be a cost to that.
And just to give you a ballpark, it can be anywhere from eight to twelve thousand dollars. So, that twenty-two would go pretty quick. If, if the commission decides to go that, that route.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council.
So moved.
Second?
Well, all right. I may move it to tomorrow, which we're not gonna have a meeting tomorrow. So, move it to the mayor and council meeting of October sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries your ass. Thank you, thank you, Terry.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
I love your energy and enthusiasm. Okay, now, we're gonna get into the bond package presentation. We'll start with the, uh, the municipal, the municipal building. There is a hard copy on your desk, it is a revised, uh, bonding package. What you will notice is that the HVAC has been removed. And, uh, one of the things we're going to do is, we are going to be cleaning our HVAC system. And then, with the amount that was, uh, proposed. That would have driven up our total bonding amount to within two million dollars of our maximum allowed, according to Connecticut statute. And so, what we want to do is, uh, we are going to clean it and then evaluate in the future. If we're going to, to, uh, either phase it or decide to bond more and see where that goes. But we, so, the current, uh, bonding package does not have HVAC in it, and that's what you have in front of you in our copy. Okay? All right, so what? All right, which slide is this? Okay, so here's the agenda. We're gonna talk about previous bonding, facility repairs and rehabilitation, the PDADA accessible entrance, and then roof replacement. Okay, so previous bonding, we had fiscal year twenty-twelve. In December twen, uh, December twenty-eleven, city council approved a bond for three million eight-hundred-thirty-one thousand dollars for the planning. Acquisition, design, engineering, and construction of various, uh, public improvements, including roof replacement at Colonel Ledger School. Pollution abatement facility wall, Costa property bulkhead, Thames Street sewer lining, and John Street drainage project. And for administrative printing, legal, and financing costs, the freeman approved the issuance of the bonding in February twenty-twelve. In February twenty-sixteen, there was a special freemen's meeting to approve the reappropriation of a hundred thousand dollars of the funds. As the Colonel Ledger School project was reevaluated and scaled back. Projects included rehabilitation, improvement in equipping of the city municipal building. Including, but not limited to, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, repointing of brick exterior, door replacement, bathroom renovations, and office renovations. Rehabilitation improvement in equipping of the Mother Bailey House. Site work, landscaping, rehabilitation, improvements for a parking area at the Costa property. Planning, design, engineering permitting, environmental and geological studies and testing, and other professional costs related to the foregoing. The freeman voted down the reappropriation. In April two thousand and sixteen, there was a new resolution put forth to reappropriate four hundred thousand dollars of bond funds for rehabilitation. Improvement and equipping of the city municipal building, including, but not limited to, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. Repointing of brick exterior, door replacement, bathroom renovations, and office renovations. And the planning, design, engineering permitting, environmental and geological studies and testing, and other professional costs. The freeman approved the reappropriation. In two thousand and twenty-one, resolution was brought forth to appropriate six hundred thousand dollars of unspent bond proceeds for various projects. Including rehabilitation, improvement in equipping of the city municipal building. Including, but not limited to, window and door replacement, front landing upgrades, office and locker room renovations, and pollution abatement. Renovations to the Tyler House, including, but not limited to, winter replacement and related structural repairs. Renovations to the Broad Street Firehouse, including, but not limiting to, the paving of the parking lot and door thresholds. And the planning, designing, engineering permitting, environmental and geological studies and testing, and other professional administrative costs. The final result, uh, the final reappropriation passed. Okay, so if you go to slide four. Which is facility repairs and rehabilitation, the police department ADA accessible entrance. So, the slide five, the overview. The police department is in need of an ADA accessible entrance. Currently, the only ADA entrance is through the main entry in the front of the building. If someone is looking for the police department, they currently need to be escorted from the city clerk's office to the, uh, police department lobby through the mayor's office corridor. The municipal building is in need of cosmetic repairs, including new flooring, paint, and ceiling tiles in various locations. We anticipate TBC will fully evacuate the head-in room, which is the back of the building near the current public works offices, by the close of two thousand and twenty-five. The police department has been experiencing space issues, so it was discussed renovating the head-in room to accommodate four new detective office spaces, plus an interview room. This would allow for a slight reconfiguration of the main portion of the police, police department, and give the space allocations that they're in need of. Minor construction to close in the roll call room and create a new armory and radio room. Create a new report writing office, and also a public-facing interview room. So that the general public does not need to walk into the police department in order to conduct an interview. Also, add a privacy screen and roof to the existing Sallyport. This will allow for protection from the elements and also privacy. Also, adding key card entry to the Sallyport to make the entrance of the building more secure. In addition, adding key card entry to the public works garage, also making the building more secure. Okay, next slide. So, this is a picture of the plan, you can see the color coding of what we're looking for. And then, next slide. So, the proposed bonding is inclusive of demolition, construction, electrical finishing work, PD, uh, sorry. Electrical finishing work, PD accessible, ADA accessibility, key card entry readers. Okay, next slide. Roof replacement. Okay, nine. Whoops. Okay, yep. Uh, the roof was replaced in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. The product garland came out with a limited ten-year warranty. For the past few years, we've been experiencing leaks with unsuccessful attempts to patch, both internally. And bringing in roofing companies provide fixes. It was determined after the last round of patchwork, that the only solution would be a full roof replacement. Bringing back, bringing back all layers of the roof down to the metal, fixing any issues with the metal, and providing a full replacement. The most pressing leaks are in the clerk's office, where it's leaking, where the upper cabinets are replaced, and in the police cell, and in the police cell block. Throughout the building, it is easy to pinpoint additional weak points by looking at the stains on the ceiling tiles. Okay, ten. Proposed bonding is inclusive of pre-construction, demolition, and removal of material, installation of the new roof. And then, lastly, the final recap. So, the final recap is the total bonding package is two million six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. So... With that, I will open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the last one because I think that'll be the easiest one for my questions. What is the administrative and project management cost set aside for further roofing? Is that... Why is that separated out? And what is it specifically for?
Does you, Council, you want to help me with this? Please come up here.
I, I, maybe I'll explain what, because, so if I buy a new roof for my house, I pay the contractor an amount for a roof, he doesn't say, well, I also need fifteen percent of that is for me to walk around and...
Now, that's buried into the cost.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So specifically, what is, what is detailed in administrative and project management that's not, it just seems like a high number for that amount?
Yeah, so part of this, it's a little bit different. When you look at a building like the municipal building, or if you were to look at a larger commercial space, there's definitely going to be some costs associated with administrative and engineering and project management. So when they come out here to look at the roof and everything, they're going to need to have some funds if there's any kind of engineering or design that they need to look into. Overall, when you run a project, you have to look at the three different spaces, which are going to be your labor and material costs, as well as your engineering costs, and then you should have your contingency costs included as well for any kind of problems you may run into or overages. So assuming, Deputy Mayor, that you're looking at the slide that talks about just the roof with the nine hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so that would be about ten percent of the project cost would go to administrative and project management. When they come out to your house, they'll probably just give you a cost with it buried. The only, we just, it's just a layer of transparency here. So when you get quoted for the project cost, it's going to be broken out when we're showing it to you. So that's the difference.
Right. So what is, so you're saying that cost is the person that comes out, they're going to look at and analyze the project, decide the scope of the project, and engineering, and all of that is what is included in that number?
That's correct. Yep.
Anything else?
Um... I think that's my only question right now about the roof. I just want, I, I obviously am in the building often enough. The roof obviously needs to be redone. I think that's not a question that anyone has. The only thing that would make this not a project we would do is if we were going to build a whole new building, which is obviously out of the question. So I obviously am in favor of redoing the roof and I think bonding it makes sense, as we've discussed many, many times. Something that's going to last a while makes sense to bond. So I guess actually that is my other question, is how long do we expect the new roof to last? Will, will we be getting a similar ten-year warranty, or will, will we be looking for a longer warranted product?
I assume the, the one that was done on ten years ago, that was just the patch. I mean, they went, they just kind of put the garland product down. This will, like the mayor said, will be a full replacement. It's got to be twenty to thirty, but I'm not sure exactly what the standard life of a flat roof is because that is, the, the flat roof being the challenge. But we can look into finding out what that is for you and get back to you on that.
Okay, and when are we looking to approve this bonding?
Uh, I'm going to, uh, we're going to move it to the, recommend moving it to the mayor and council meeting of the twentieth.
October twentieth.
Of October. So, so let's talk about that. So there will be a public hearing followed by a mayor and council. And then if mayor and council approves it, then it'll have to go to a Freemans' meeting, which, Ron, did we, we didn't have a date on the Freemans' meeting, right? Because the Freemans' meeting is going to be out a little bit.
I have not worked on any schedule or anything like that. I don't know if there's one that's been put together or not.
So it's got, so, so we go to a public hearing and then the council approves, and then it's got to go to the Freeman, or the Freeman to approve it. So it's probably not going to get approved until, I don't know, December, January, maybe, I don't know. Do we, we don't have, we don't, we haven't put that schedule together yet, right? Because there's some, there's notifications and all. Is that right, Danny?
Right, yeah, I think, I think Jackie and I, I think Jackie and I spoke about it would need two notifications. So at the earliest, we were thinking end of November, but that with holidays was just going to be hard. So I think it was going to be more December.
So this is the Freemans' meeting in December.
Okay.
Anything else?
The rest of my questions pertain to the police department section of it, if the chief can answer those questions.
You still have the floor. Chief, if you could come forward. Stay here for a moment in case I need to, to reference you.
Okay, so I, it's been a discussion for a long time, the space in the police department. My concern is that we're putting a Band-Aid on a bigger problem because when I look at this map of the police department and walking through it, this isn't going to solve a lot of the issues that we have. So it does solve some of them. We do need a radio and armory room because I've seen our radio room and it's teeny tiny. So we do need this space, all of these things. But I guess my question to you is, how long will this Band-Aid work?
So I think what we have to do is look at it as a phased approach as opposed to trying to bankrupt the city in one shot, right? We do have a cost analysis on a complete remodel, which would be everything we'd be looking for, but that was in the tens of millions of dollars, which is just something that we cannot afford. What we're looking to do, as opposed to a Band-Aid, what I would say is while we're doing the rehabbing of our spaces, abatement, flooring replacement, ceiling replace, replacement, we're also going to move some of the personnel around, which will assist us in securing locations that should have been secure anyway, as far as the roll call room. And then, you're right, as far as the armory radio. I mean, right now, the radio room, public access or worker access is through our radio room to go up to the roof if they're going to do any kind of repairs. That's supposed to be a secure, secure location because that's police equipment that's sitting there. You know, it's a make-do type arrangement right now. The cleaning closet is our armory. We actually have to unload the armory in order to get to the stuff and then we load the stuff back up again in there. It's just not, not large enough for our needs. The detective spacing is one of the areas that's leaked, so that roofing definitely needs to come down. So if we transition over to the, the head-end room, that would allow us to, to have some transitional space. We'll go ahead and we'll fix that. Then we can move personnel there before we, we move people around in the police department. So part of this also is a chess piece because I'm trying to make a space so I can move people, so we can fix it and move people in there so I can fix another space. Records, for example, the roof leaks, we've got plastic covers over our records. That, that shouldn't be occurring, but we need to fix that. And nobody's opened up the, the roof to have a look to see what kind of shape that's in just above the ceiling tile. So, I mean, this is work that, it needs to be done. It's probably overdue. I know we looked, we had a receipt for our flooring. Our flooring was last looked at in two thousand and six. So, and it's starting to lift and come up in, in certain areas. So, yeah, it's, it's not an all-in-one, but I think it's just what we can afford for the time being, and it will take care of some of the immediate repairs that we need to be done, as well as some of our immediacy as far as space needs are concerned.
And as soon as TBC is out of the head-in room, we'll clear that. We're going to have to clear that out. We're going to have to replace the fire suppression system because currently it's a chemical product.
It's a Halon system.
It's a Halon system.
Right.
And, which is not good for people, so...
Sucks the oxygen out of the air, so it's not a good thing to work in that space.
So one time use on. And, and then we'll be posting propositions, but we don't want to do that. So anyway, we're going to clean, and once that's done, then we can start moving people and that'll clear up swing space. That'll give us swing space so we can go to the next thing and go to the next thing. So it's overdue. This is, some of it is, we're doing the best with what we can afford because we still, what we don't want to do is max out the credit card in the event that we have something that comes up down the road that you got to get done, that you have to bond. I mean, this falls under having to bond. I want to bond this. We need to bond this in order to fix some long-term things that we've been do, you know, been working with, and this will rectify a lot of our situations.
I also, I love the idea of having an interview room that you don't have to go into the PD. I think that's really smart. And I can totally see, just being in there so often, I can totally see why that's going to be super useful, so I like that idea. Can you, oh, where are the detectives right now when I'm looking at this map? Are they in where we're putting the radio and armory room?
They're in the back corner, next to, all, all the way over to the left side. So they actually are, the backs of their office are against this hallway right here, all the way at the end.
Oh, where this says conference room?
No, it's actually further on, well, yes, so where the conference room is, other side of the, the, the map.
I'm just trying to visualize it on the...
All right, Ron, we'll go to this. There you go.
Right, so, so this, this is currently, this is the space that the detective...
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
This is the hallway, this hallway right, right on the other side, goes all the way to the entrance. Oop, I touched it. So they're, they're right in here, so we're going to swing space that after we move them over here.
Okay. And can you explain for people what we use the Sally Port for?
So the Sally Port is where we bring individuals that are in custody. It's supposed to be a secure, again, it's supposed to be a secure facility. Currently, there is a door opener that allows vehicle access that's secure. However, there's a side door that is not secure. So I'm not saying that we're going to have a prisoner break, but that needs to be a key reader or, or locked access, so there is no pedestrian access into that. Also, there's no confidentiality right now, right? People do have the right to have protections. Not everybody, obviously, that we arrest is, is found guilty. There are pathways in the court system that you can take to have your records erased, et cetera. It's just trying to give some confidentiality to those individuals that we bring into the, into the Sally Port. And I will say, there used to be a roof on it, just again, because we're trying to not only take care of ourselves, but also take care of those prisoners that we bring in here. There's no reason that we should expose them to, to the weather if we don't have to. But currently, it's an open-air facility because that roofing collapsed a while ago and has not been replaced, so.
And then, I think my last question. If you could add an item or two to this list, what, I'm not saying we're going to right now, but what are your next couple important improvements in the police department?
Yeah, so I would look at locker rooms first, right? So we have, you know, it was brought up the other day that because, and, and it's a great thing, we promoted some female supervisors into the police department and presumably they will continue their growth in their career path. We don't have locker space. We have it for male supervisors, but we don't have it for female supervisors. Also, if we were to hire additional females in a ratio, we're out of female locker room space downstairs. So I would look at the, the gender-specific locker rooms first, as far as that's concerned. And then the other big item, if we had, if we won the Lotto, I would look at the cell area because the cell area needs to be separate and secure from where the traffic of civilians can be. Right now, it is not. We do have a way to close it off, but it's just a door and it's supposed to be isolation of sight and sound. The sound part is lacking, so we would move, and again, in our big architectural plans, we ended up with a whole facility downstairs in the basement, but that, the, the expense on that is just, it, it's extreme, so we can't afford it right now.
Yes, cost prohibitive.
Right.
Those are the two things on my list that I was going to ask you about. So, because I, I do, as I, I've toured the PD and I've been in there, not in a cell, but, and the, the female-to-male ratio of officers has increased and, I mean, it was even worse previously before the, the lockers were redone a couple years ago. So I appreciate that that's at the forefront of your mind because obviously, you know, people need to like where they work and have space and all of that. And I don't want us to not be able to recruit more female officers because we don't have the space to do it. In your mind, when do you think in the future that you might look to do that, if, if this project gets approved, timeline-wise?
It depends on what the funding sources are, right? I don't see us being able to put it in the general budget, so to speak. I think that that's going to be either a grant application that we can apply for as a police department, and there isn't one out there right now that's like that, or the city could apply for infrastructure improvements, and, and we can count that as an infrastructure based on the fact that, you know, we're first responders, we're part of the city, et cetera. But I think we're going to have to look for outside sources in order to consider that. It's just, I mean, you did a lot of work on that, and, and she could tell you, the cost is just ridiculous, right? So, right now with the building expenses, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to say, similar to the roof, I, I've been in the PD and there's not enough space in there for what you guys do. I, I think these improvements are sensible in shifting people around. And the other thing, I think, I see that there's a traffic office on the plans. You know, between that and the interview room, I think making it more conducive to dealing with the public as well is a really good improvement as we've seen the public engaging more with our public safety departments. I think those are smart upgrades.
And we are the twenty-four-seven part of the building and we currently don't have that ramp. You know, the arrangements right now are for the individual to call dispatch and we'll send an officer down to you. But realistically, that might present kind, you know, a hardship if there's a language barrier, et cetera. They should be able to come into the lobby, so, and, and we should be able to assist them right there.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Let's see a hand over here. Counselor Sheffield.
My thought was getting an additional level to this building, with probably with a, you know...
We, well, we looked at, we looked at that several years ago.
I know, yeah.
When Smith was here, Carlton Smith was here, and the building structure will not support a second story.
That is correct.
So that's out.
Yeah.
That's out.
Counselor Norris.
I'm wondering with the roof, what do we get to do different? So we're still going to do a flat roof?
I mean, I can't speak to, you said it was patching last time? It was a different product laid on top, Ron? This would be a complete rip back to the stud, so same thing you think about your own home, you're patching your roof at your home versus bringing it back to the studs and rebuilding it so it's done properly. That's, that's the difference.
But it's still going to be a flat roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because years ago, when Carlton Smith was here, we looked at doing an alternate design, a pitched roof or trying to lift it so that it had, had an angle on it, and the, the cost for doing that with the, was prohibitive. We were talking four and five million dollars in order to do that. So we have, you know, we have a flat roof and, and I don't think there's a whole we can do. We also have some equipment that's on the roof that can't be moved, right? I mean, we have the HVAC handler, air handlers, and, and those kind of things that are in the way.
Right, so could you give me a broad stroke on what kind of materials would be used on the roof?
I don't know the intricacies, um...
Well, we won't know until the RFP, until we put out the RFP, right?
I mean, your office did get a quote, and I have no idea what that had on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the materials were.
Okay, and then, the, the last thing I have when it comes to roof is it would be nice to know, um, life expectancy. It would als- I would also like to know what kind of warranty and guarantees we have. Is it a limited, uh, twenty-five, twenty, ten? What are our, um, safe spots and inspection marks that we need to fulfill to keep our warranty in place? So, I don't know if those are necessarily questions for you versus everyone in the room that we can deal with. So, that's it for the roof. I hate roofs too. So, that's right, dealing with flat roofs myself, alright. So I wanted to talk about the police department. I hate to say this, people probably already know it, are afraid to say it, but is our police facility done? Um, I'm hearing that there's a lot of things to get done, that the deputy mayor pointed out, that you even alluded to, you know, this couple of phases that we're looking at. So one, it would be really nice to see a true CIP on the police department, on what those phases are and what that costs. Because if we're looking at spending, I'm just making this up. Five million dollars in ten years, well, crap, let's talk about spending eighteen for thirty years and expand the footprint of the police department and get the things you need. It doesn't need to go up, I don't know if it can go out, because you named like five things right off the bat that are serious items. So I go back to, are we just saying, we need a new police facility, we're just being... We think we're being penny-smart to get to an endpoint that ten years from now is actually gonna cost us a lot more. But with all of that said, let's say we move with this, I would dare say we add money to this bond. And it's gonna be at least three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, where we contract experts, engineers, architects, that truly give us a conceptual design that we can look at and go, hm, that's where we need to be in five years, six years, seven years. How do we financially get there?
So, I got that, yes.
Who, who, because both of you have comments.
Right, so, so we've already done that, right? We've had, we have a professional architect with a professional plan who gave us, um, the total co- or the cost estimate for a complete redo.
Yeah.
Um, and that was across the building, and that would divide the three spaces, so, uh, police department, admin, and GU, uh, and redo the space, all of the spaces within the building, right? Because it's the miss- at the end of the day, it's the footprint, right? We would go outside of our footprint, our current footprint, to incorporate some of the needs that, that I talked about. Um, as far as, uh, the Sally Port was concerned, that would go underneath, uh, that would, and there'd be a prisoner processing room and ex- et cetera. The problem is, and, and Ron can talk to this, but your bonding money will never meet the cost of what we need to spend to get that done. I think it was sixteen to eighteen million.
Yeah, after your contingencies and your engineering, you're looking at just over twenty million dollars.
Right.
But that's twenty million for the entire building?
It was only, it was not proportionate, so if you focused just on the, um, PD side of it and the additions in the basement, that would help with, um, the, uh, the chief's cell issues. Um, you're talking still close to fourteen million.
But it would be nice to know that, see that, discuss that.
Well, we have it, I mean, we can show you the architectural design. Uh, it's great for, for us. Here's the other thing too, we share a common roof, so the co- the roof has to be replaced no matter what, right?
I, I, I got that, I'm, I'm beyond the roof, I'm not talking about the roof. I, I mean, I got that, I'm just talking about to get where the police department needs to get to, are we gonna have this exact same conversation five years from now? That's what I'm trying to go, okay, where do we really wanna be? So that, that, so, so there's maybe answers and not answers, but I just wanna say that I really would like to see if it's done. I don't know if you have anyone, uh, now, that can just rip out for me. I know the roof, let's not talk about the roof, is what needs to happen to the police department? Where does, if twenty-five years from now, where, what should that look like? Because it's not this, so what does it look like? So, so that, that, that would be one thing. And then, I, in terms of space back here, with the shifting of people stuff, does this affect any other department?
So, Public Works is currently, the two offices that are at that head-end area, next to, you know, the Breeze Line Equipment, they would move down the hallway slightly, um, because there's a conference room and an office across from there, which we, we're using as a traffic office. Um, that was outside, again, that's outside our secure area.
Yep.
So we have moved the traffic officer inside our secure area, so that office space is now vacant. So there's, again, we're looking at transitional, right? So can I move those individuals to other spaces that we currently have today? The answer is yes, and then we would go ahead in turn and occupy those spaces.
So the spaces where we're talking about Public Works, are those spaces occupied right now with human beings, or are they empty?
Uh, currently, it's the director and the, uh, administrative staff.
Okay, alright. Thank you. It is what it is.
Anything else? Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, kinda bouncing off what Counselor Norris said, um... One, can we be provided that whole plan of the building and what that looks like? But also, uh, what these numbers are based on? Because if I heard correctly, we're not sure what type of roof this quote is for. So...
So what numbers do you want?
For, for both of these, for both of these projects, what are, what are these numbers based on? What are these estimates based on the documentation? Because generally, when, when we get, um, go to approve a, a project, we get the estimate. And I know that we have to put out an RFP to choose the actual contractor for, for it, but, um... Could we have the documentation of what, either estimates or information these numbers are based on?
Well, the roof, we have a quote. So Jackie got that quote, so we can have, provide you with that. Where do the numbers come from for the...
We have, we have a report, we have a full architectural design report for anything involving facilities.
Alright, then we'll take that as a look-up, we'll provide it to the council.
Perfect, thank you.
You wanna?
Just wanna add one thing on here, we're limited by state statute as what, to what we can borrow. That's our biggest challenge right now. What that is based off of is two, two and a quarter times your tax base is all that we can borrow. So, right now, with what we currently have issued, we're about nine-point-five million of bonds that we could issue. That's it, for the, for general-purpose bonds. I've had, having conversations with our financial advisor and our, uh, um, bond counsel, I actually have another call with them tomorrow, about are there even any other options? Because when you read the statute, general-purpose bonds are restricted by that, and because of our tax base being so small, it, that number is significantly small. So that is a, one of the challenges that we have right now. I don't have a solution as to another way around it, because notes payable go against it. Any debt that's even authorized, even if it's not issued, goes against that number, so it's not just issued debt. So that is a hurdle that we're facing right now. So to do a fourteen-million project, we couldn't bond that. We'd be, we'd be going against state statute. So that's just one of the, the big challenges that we're looking at right now, if there is any way around that.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Sorry, let me have another question. So I know that you said a number in the beginning, but, so how much have we, do we have bonded right now?
Currently, right now, there's one-point-three million in general-purpose bonds. That's outstanding, as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
And you're saying we could bond nine-point-five million total?
As of last year's debt limitation schedule, so the, our debt limitation max was eleven million two-twenty-six, so then once you take that one-point-two out, it brings you down to that, like, nine-point-five number.
Oh, okay.
So there's, we have nine-point-five still that, right now, is in excess of our debt limitation that we could bond up. So if we wanted to go out and borrow, we could only borrow up to nine-point-five total in general-purpose bonds.
Okay, so what, what made us decide that this, these two projects for one point? Wait, where did I go? What made us decide that these two projects were going to be what we bond right now? And not say something more? I'm not saying we should bond more, I'm just saying, so, right now, you're saying our total is a, what did you say, eleven point, what?
As of the twenty-four, it was eleven-point-two, was what the debt limit, which were our cap was at.
So...
That's not how much we have left.
And, right, and then you have to subtract out the one-point-three.
So, we...
So if you go back to the original package that we sent you, there was another five million dollars in there for HVAC. We took that out.
Okay.
Because that was gonna drive me up against the nine, nine million dollars. So I know when you look at this, you're like, oh, wow, it's only two million dollars or three million dollars. It was higher than that, and we took out the HVAC so that we can, we're gonna clean the HVAC, the HVAC system, and then we're gonna look to see what projects we need to look at in the future that may be coming up. So, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Well, so I guess my question is, we removed the HVAC project. Is there, did we look at maybe adding another section of the PD project that's less than five million or a smaller amount? Something that we clearly need or another part? Because as we know, this bonding in general, it's, takes a whole long process, we have to have a freeman's meeting and all of that. So I understand not doing the HVAC project, that makes sense because it put us really high against the cap, but is there another section of the PD project or the space project or something that would make sense to add now that doesn't put us towards that gap, but still utilizes the room that we have in bonding? Is, is there a reason that we're not adding a smaller project instead of the HVAC?
So I think the problem is, is y- y- you can't account for every emergency that the city may have, right? Um, it would be great to say, and, and that would be a little selfish of me to turn around and, hey, police chief, we're gonna give you nine million dollars. Great, you know, that would fix a lot of ours, uh, our deficiencies. However, number one, it becomes police department-centric, uh, which is not fair to the rest of the departments in the city. And the second thing is, there are projects ongoing and, you know, unforeseeable ones that are outside these four walls um, that we may need that money for later on. And as Ron told you, um, you know, we only have a certain amount of bonding that we can do. It's still gonna take us a little, even though we may bond and the freeman may vote on this, that's still gonna count against our cap because it's gonna take us a little while to pay this off before then it frees up additional space, uh, for a rainy day, so to speak, that comes down the road, and we don't know what that's gonna look at. So from my point of view, I wanna stay in a, a percentage, um, as far as what I'm asking for, um, and then what the, the building in general is asking for, as opposed to taking, uh, you know, all of the funding. I appreciate that, but I don't think that's fair to, again, the other departments and, and what may come down the road later on.
Well, so I guess my question is then for the finance department, do we have a list of projects that have kind of been kicked down the road over the years, um, that would require bonding?
There, um, there are pro- there are other projects across the city, I will say that. Um, as far as the total, I don't have that with me, but I would definitely say there are other projects that could go into bonding. Again, the issue being, from my standpoint, from finance looking at this, I think that there's a lot of things in the works right now um, that we don't know, and that the biggest thing is trying to figure out if there is any way with this debt limitation cap around that, if there is an emergency that comes up where we need to bond. Like I said, I, so we're, we're, it's, like, right now, I apologize, I said nine-five, it's like nine-point-nine when you take out away the, um, principal payment from the twenty-twenty-five year. Again, this number fluctuates a little bit because it's based on taxes, so our tax did go up a little bit as far as collections go, so that will go up a little, it's not gonna be a drastic change. So to, trying to work with our financial advisor and the bond counsel to see if there are other ways that we physically can do it, I think is our next step before we come and say, alright, here's all of our bonding package and we wanna issue seven million dollars of bonds and only give ourselves a two-million, three-million-dollar contingency, for lack of a better, in bonding if something big were to come up.
Yep, other thing you gotta take into account is, when you talk about tax revenue, is right now, there, the enterprise zone, the building six-hundred, six-oh-four, six-oh-five, those are still, we're getting revenues at the twenty percent level. And we're gonna get revenues at twenty percent level until fiscal year thirty. And then fiscal year thirty, that five years is done, and then that goes up to the hundred percent of the tax base. So that'll give you some more tax revenue, right? In which your bonding could then go up, right? No?
Yep.
Well, hold on, Ron, is it?
Y- yes and no, because it's truly your tax number is your plug, for the lack of a better, based on your expenditure budget.
So, okay.
It'll, it'll increase your grand list.
Right, it'll increase your grand list. So, and then if there's any other building that may happen on Pfizer or Electric Boat in the, in the future, then eventually that will get onto the tax roll. Pfizer building will go on the tax one-hundred percent that year, or actually, the next fiscal year, if it's, if it's taken into account before October, uh, and when the grand list is, uh, evaluated. Electric Boat, depending on where it's built, is, it's all in the enterprise zone, and so, uh, I don't remember. Ron, did we determine if Garbo's is in or out of the enterprise zone?
I did not look into that, I do have a map of that in my office, though, so I can look at, get back on that.
Because Electric Boat purchased Garbo's, and they're gonna do something with that, but we don't know what. And then therefore, that will, uh, continue to be on the, on the, uh, the grand list at some value. But then again, it depends on whether it's in the, uh, enterprise zone or not, and I don't, and I saw a map, and I don't remember what color it is. Uh, okay, any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I have one more question for the finance director. Is there a best practice for municipalities on how much of that bonding space is best to leave for emergencies?
We're probably one of a very few that has this issue, just because of our taxes being so low. When you figure, like, the, the town actually has a policy that they're actually stricter than what state statute is for what they allow to issue in debt. I believe it's ten percent of their expenditures can go towards debt payments or something like that. But be, it's just because our tax base is just, our tax burden is just so small, our dollar amount's just that small. You know, we don't have, uh, the Board of Ed budgets, we don't have, or just all the scopes of services that a regular municipality would have. I could look in to see if there is a best practice, but my guess is that most municipalities, this is an, an issue where they have to worry about a contingency or a rainy day fund for bonding, unless it goes against their own policy. But I, but I can definitely look and try to see what other municipalities around us are doing.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Norris?
I apologize. This is the reason why I like to see CIP in a book, lay it out for eight years. So over eight years, what do we get, a cash fund, what do we get, a bond, whatever? So right now, it'd be really easy to say, absolutely bond two million dollars, because... Because in, we're not gonna bond anything else for another five years, but I don't know that. So we really, if we do have a CIP plan, I don't know what it is from now to thirty thirty five. I have no idea. So you're sitting there because I'm going, wait a minute, wait a minute, but I know how critical it is to get the work done. Some kind of odds, I don't know which way to go, to be the honest, and I know I'm not the deciding vote here, but. You know, I understand in emergencies, but you know, I'm sure, because again, do we know in the next five years? Like what's in the hopper, what's unscheduled, we have no idea. So I'm just sitting here tooting my own horn, so I'm gonna stop talking.
Any any other questions or comments regarding this? Alright? Me get to the agenda. And then I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of October twentieth twenty twenty five.
So move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, abstained?
Opposed.
Okay. Uh. So the motion passes four to one to zero. Alright, thank you, chief. Alright, we'll move on to Grighton Utilities Electric Water and Sewer. The original packet that you had in your, uh, emails stays, so with that, I'll turn it over to Kelsey.
I didn't introduce myself when I came up to speak previously, so I apologize, but I'm Kelsey Odell. I work in our projects and engineering group at Grighton Utilities. Um, I work for the water, sewer, and electric departments. Um, today, we're gonna speak to you guys about our proposed bonding for fiscal year twenty six and forward. And as we go throughout, I will call up our subject matter experts, um, who work faithfully in our departments. And if we have any technical questions, they can help me answer some of those. Actually, wanna start, so I'm not sure if anyone got the chance to watch our lovely long presentation from the GUC. I know it wasn't short, um, so I'll try to keep it briefer here. Um, do you guys have any questions before we move into the overall presentation? Okay, I just wanted to give that moment. There we are. Alright, so for today, um, when you talk about a capital improvement plan process. Um, in life cycle, um, right now, we're coming to you today for our bu- budget and financing. We have a lot of, we have a large project portfolio. Um, this is our hand selected projects I bring forward, um, to talk about today. And essentially. Over time, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get this little taskbar out of our way here. Um, over time, we look at asset conditions of our different things and infrastructure in our systems. Um, which will move into our planning and analysis. That's a lot of the pre-engineering and engineering that the group that I work for does. Um, today, we're stopping at budget and financing, and then we move into our full RFPs that do all of our design and builds. So those are the last two. Um, just to explain to you guys a little bit about how we how we build out our portfolios and where we are in the cycle. Um, previously in twenty twenty one, uh, we went for bonding with sewer, water, and electric. Our sewer group, um, bonded five million dollars, water was seven point five million, and electric was fifteen point two million. Uh, to date, we've completed all the projects on this list with the exception of the Brandikey Sandpipe that's ongoing. We still have some general bonding available for us there. Um, but just to give you guys kind of a generalized idea of how much we, um, borrow and, you know, the accomplishments that we we move through with that. Um, notably, we've done our large HVAC and odor control system at our sewer plant, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Um, and then on our water side, we've done our low lift intake screens, which are basically our, the way we move water into our water treatment plant. Um, as well as midway oval upgrades, which is in our distribution pipelines. Um, and then meter replacements, so we've moved to AMI meter replacements, um, in our water in, uh, sector. And then on the electric side, we did our, um, ECT transmission line project, which upgraded our almost two miles of transmission lines into our largest substation. Um, called Buddington Substation, and we've upgraded, um, two of the terminals there, um, from sixty nine to a hundred and fifteen KV. Transmission line circuits, so, uh, just an example of some of the stuff we accomplished with this bonding that we we borrow. Uh, we'll start today with sewer. I have Joe Pratt with me. Um, he's our manager of water and our operations manager of water and wastewater. Um, do you wanna introduce yourself any further than that?
No, that's.
That's his name, that's what he does. Um, so for sewer, we had a grant that we got through CTD. And we looked at our facilities, um, down on the shoreline there. And essentially, there's a lot of words on this screen, but the short of it is that they gave us a twenty year capital improvement plan for our facility down there. And for the first five years, um, phase one is what I'll call it, it's nine point zero three million dollars that we're looking at in facility improvements. And then beyond that, there's another fifteen years of improvement slated for about six million dollars. I just always like to preface when we're going through this, as we're moving through this, um, that price is subject to change over years, so that's inflation. Uh, but this is what the true cost is right now. Uh, this is the breakdown. Um, essentially, just to give background as well, when we get all these cost breakdowns, we're working with our engineering firms. Um, so there's a lot of words here adding up to what that full price is of the nine point oh three million dollars that we're looking, um, to go to bonding for. So, uh, this breakdown would cover years zero through five of our capital improvement plan at our facility. Um, and this facility plan, just so you all know, is available online on our website. It's public. Uh, we have a few different buildings that we're looking to do improvements on. Um, just to give you guys some background, too, the deep grant that we got, looked into basically our resiliency down there at the shoreline. And how we can help improve our facility to make us more resilient to that, as well as general infrastructure upgrades that we need to move through. Anything shaded in this light blue gray area here, um, is basically showing where the current floodplain is. Uh, you can see some of our, um, areas, uh, could be impacted by that. With that, within the plan, there were some recommendations of fixing some some walls and hardening our, uh, facility a bit. Um, there's also a lot of language in there about a lot of different kinds of pumps, um, that Joe is way more intimate with than I am. A lot of different kinds of pumps, um, aeration systems, uh, and general roofing upgrades and things like that. Um, it's very, very detailed. I think the plan itself is probably over a hundred pages. Uh, but in short, what we're looking to do, um, like we are here in this municipal building at our facilities building, we're looking to harden it. And upgrade any kind of infrastructure, um, that needs, uh, upgrade that was recommended by our engineers. Um, I'll keep it short and sweet. Joe, do you wanna add anything to that?
No, that's, that's.
Okay. I could talk for a long time, so I'm trying not to bore you guys. Do you guys have any questions with sewer before we move into our water group?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Yes. In in trying to, um. Kind of understand it completely.
Yep.
If we didn't bond for these, this year zero to five of your plan, we didn't bond for these projects, what would happen?
If we didn't bond, upgrade our facility.
Mm hmm.
Um, over time, you'd probably find issues with pumps breaking down. Um, most of these things are at the end of their useful life, uh, which it's always more expensive to replace things in an emergency than it is to do on a planned schedule. Um, our roof is also due, um, for upgrades as well. I think a lot of that roof is, do you know what year the building was?
It was the original, original roof. It's the, it's a flat roof with the stone on it still.
Mm hmm.
That, um, it pours in in the, in the building when it rains.
Yeah, so we have similar problems that you guys here do with, um, the staining and everything like that. Um, sea level rise obviously is a conversation as well. Um, we could face issues with that during storms and such. Obviously, the theme is title. Um, so this takes into consideration both tidal flooding and rain flooding. Um, and then we also, overall, the whole building has. When we moved from being in a taxpayer to a rate payer base, um, we weren't able to do a lot of the capital infrastructure projects that it truly needed over a long period of time. Um, so I'm just here to say basically it's overdue and it needs to be done. If it doesn't happen, you'll be paying for it in an emergency situation.
And then does the the bonding for, uh, for these projects? Is that included in the cost of service study?
It is.
That we've done?
Yeah, so this nine point zero three million dollars is supported by the cost of service study that you guys approved earlier this year.
So this is not an impact after the fact of the cost of service study that we just saw. This was anticipated already.
Yes.
In that service study.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any one else on sewer? Okay, move on to water?
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Mike?
I'm gonna have Mike Weber come up and join me. He's our general manager of water and sewer.
Yeah.
Um, during our water cycle here, I'm gonna talk a bit about our, um, asset management lifecycle. So we've been fortunate enough to bring aboard a program called City Works that is helping us. Basically, look at all of the infrastructure in our system. Um, and make, you know, educated plans on what needs to be done in our system based off of, um, you know, an array of analysis. Could be the age, how it's functioning, if there's frequent breaks, um, anything like that. Uh, so within this asset management plan, basically, we're looking, um, at the plan section. The rest of this would be acquiring, would be us purchasing any new assets, you maintain and operate it over time. And we're gonna see today, there's some things that are ready to be in the dispose cycle. So overall, we're looking for ten point five million dollars for proposed water bonding. And to your point, Deputy Mayor, um, this is also included in the cost of service study, um, that you guys just recently passed. I believe that was last month. Uh, with that, what we're looking for, um, bonding to support is our Brandikey Ave Standpipe. That is our current bond that we have opened. When we were getting quotes, that was built out in twenty twenty one, so when we were getting proposals for the cost of that in twenty twenty one. It was coming in around three point five million dollars. It's now coming in closer to four point five million dollars. Um, so the first part of this bond would support any overages that we're gonna have on that project. Um, additionally, we wanna work on Bailey Hill Standpipe, um, which is another standpipe in our system, some distribution mains and meters. And then we always put a line in here for land acquisition. You'll see there's not funding associated with this, but if there's opportunity, basically. For land purchase in our distribution, um, realm, um, it is sometimes helpful on some of our standpipe areas and things like that. Uh, we get, we do get limited, um. In what we can do because we're limited by space. I'll put it that way. Uh, and more specifically, on your left, you'll see a picture of Bailey Hill Standpipe. Uh, Bailey Hill Standpipe was built in nineteen seventy five. Essentially, this whole thing inside and outside needs to be blasted and repainted. Um, to basically. Sustain the life of the steel there. The steel is starting, um, to show through. You can see it. Uh, and that'll help seal it and maintain its useful life for another thirty years or so. And the cost breakdown estimates are on the right hand of the side of the screen. We also wanna look at some of our distribution mains. We will prioritize these as we see it needs it. For example, if Woodthorpe Estates all of a sudden starts to have a bunch of breaks, we'll prioritize that over Fort Hill Home. But right now, our current priority is Fort Hill Homes, moving into Woodthorpe Estates, then Brookhaven Road, and Jurassic Drive to follow. Um, we'll get as many of those projects done as we can within a reasonable budget. And, um, that's about it for our water side of things.
Any questions on water? Anyone? Okay, move on to electric?
Okay, cool. Thank you, guys. And I'm gonna bill Bill Robarge up to speak with me on the electric side.
Bill?
Bill's our GM of electric. I'm sure you are all familiar with him.
Good evening, all.
Um, and this was the long part, so we'll keep this as quick as we can. For electric channel bonding, we are proposing, um, going to bonding for our facility, our electric facility. Uh, the current footprint, I'm actually gonna stand up and show you guys, maybe easier to explain. We refer to this part of our building here as, sorry.
Swipe up?
Can you?
I was gonna say you could swipe up and it should go up.
Oh, swipe up, okay. I know that for next time. Um, this is basically our water operations wing. We have a PM area here, and then this is our stock room. On the back half of this building, this wing into where this overall garage is, we consider this our electric wing. Um, this part of the building, anything highlighted in the dark roof was built in nineteen seventy five. We did go through and upgrade in two thousand three, two thousand four for this half of the building. Uh, excuse me, it wasn't an upgrade, it was actually an expansion. Uh, so what we're looking for at this time is to upgrade this wing here, um, and then add an additional garage space onto this. I'm a visual learner. It's helpful. Uh, so basically, we're looking for a twenty four million dollar bond that's inclusive of operation facility campus upgrades. Over, the overview of this is to show, uh, highlight of what we're gonna be upgrading. Um, there's some additional buildings that we'll go into detail a little bit further on in future slides. But just to give you guys a high level overview of what that facility would look like. One of our main and primary sources of, um, wanting to get this whole facility upgraded is its age. But also, um, right now, we're not very resilient to storms. Our primary access is highlighted here as number one, um, off of Route one here. And we have a secondary access at Bu- uh, Buddington Road. But right now, this is just a dirt road, uh, so we need to harden that quite a bit. And here in blue and orange, the blue is our hundred year, uh, storm, and the orange is a five hundred year storm. So you can see how our driveway already does and could further get inundated, um, during storms. We are seeing more five hundred year storms historically in this area. And a lot of people are unaware, but right here, there's a small marsh area that's actually subject to tide. So not only do we get floodwater concerns, but this whole area here can get inundated by tide as well. Um, as part of this, we'd be looking to upgrade the civil infrastructure in this area and, um, make sure that we have a secondary access road into our facility. Additionally, we wanna, um, get a more formal transformer yard, storage area. Essentially, we would like to put in like a warehouse that has proper oil containment. Um, that is something that's a huge focus of ours right now. We do have an oil water separator on site as well as a storage shed in the back here, but it's undersized for really what we need it to be. Unfortunately, as part of COVID, we've had to order larger, uh, stock of our transformers that are all kind of just sitting out in the yard right now. Um, and we, we used to see them in like sixteen to twenty weeks. Now it's like over fifty two weeks. Um, these are for to support our planned projects and also to support our distribution system as a whole. Uh, moving these indoors will help, um, elongate their lifespan as, um, that comes up. Some of them can be susceptible to snow, uh, UV damage. We also have to dig them out during snowstorms. Um, so in general, getting this under a roof, it could also, it could not only, excuse me, help with transformer storage. But we also have some wire reels right now that are stored, uh, further out back here. That would be nice to move indoors as well. Um, the spools that they're put on are wooden and they do rot out. That's a problem when we go to move them sometimes. So basically, the subject compliance to this is the CTD Bureau of Materials Management and Compliance. Basically, classifies anything that comes back to us. Um, so we're a generator of used oil by means of bringing our transformers back into, um, the yard. And we want to harden that system and make sure that we're set up properly with any kind of oil separators and, um, containment. We additionally, our facilities, um, as in restrooms and locker rooms are too small. We have a lot of multi-use areas right now at the operations building. You can see in the background here. Um, our linemen are sharing the, their cruise room, which is supposed to be the lunch space, and also we do meal prep there during storms. Um, with their locker room, so there's really no privacy for them to change or to bring their PPE back in to get laundered or anything like that. Um, ideally, that's something we'd like to move towards. Not only are they sharing the space, but it's now spilling into our breezeway up to our stockroom. It's really hard to see, but in the back here, there's a bunch of lockers lined back here. Um, OSHA standard. OSHA standards basically say that for every thirty-six and fifty-five employees, you're required to have three toilets. We only have two right now in the men's locker room and one in the women's locker room. So there's, there's not enough facilities in general. And we have one shower at current, and we are in emergency operation. We have crews there sometimes for days. So getting a couple more usable facilities for them is definitely a requirement. I'm gonna continue into this. Our garage as well is undersized. It was built in nineteen seventy-five. Our trucks are physically getting bigger, longer. We also have some floor drains in here that drain out to a storm retention basin for filtration. But it would be ideal in twenty twenty-five to have this actually treated and put in a proper stormwater treatment. Additionally, the actual, the pipe that leads out that to that retention basin is broken. So we do end up getting some ill filtration and we've had to get this pumped out before. We have, you know, these are anywhere between two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar assets that are sitting out in the weather sometimes instead of inside. Elongating these bucket trucks' lives is, is definitely helpful. They're a large expense to the utility. So getting these all indoors would be helpful. I took these pictures at like three oh five in the afternoon. The guys were still out, but this, this garage is actually at full capacity. So we can't fit all of our heavy and medium-duty vehicles in here. The new proposed garage would give us ten thousand nine hundred square feet as opposed to our current sixty-one hundred square feet of space. Also with that, all of the fire and exhaust suppression systems and like everything of that sort would be built into the new garage. This next slide covers a conversion. So our current garage is this kind of beige highlighted area. So our current garage, we could get converted into usable office and conference and training spaces as well as would update our locker rooms. And then the other part of the electric wing would be a reconfiguration of office spaces as well. It would help support moving possibly some of GU's employees from this building over to the operations complex and would give the women a proper locker room as well. Right now, there's not even lockers in that restroom. Our meter department as well, we'd get some meter storage and upgrades their meter farm. It would basically help with a lot of our shared space uses right now. We don't have a proper EOC at our facility. We have a skater room and then we have a conference room. We do make use of both as needed during our storms, but it would be good to be able to get everybody in one spot. And then when not in use, this would be a really great training center. We have a lot of guys who go to NEPA school, both in person and online. We have ERP training that we do annually that hosts really large groups of like thirty-five to forty people. And right now, our conference room can really only hold like twenty to twenty-five. So this kind of space would be helpful. It could not only be used by the electric group, but our water and sewer group could use that space as well. And it would be an addition of meeting space too. We have a lot of competing need for spaces at the moment. This is a overview looking at the facility. And we also want to engineer in some safety considerations with our trash disposal right now. Our guys have to basically rig like pole butts and stuff and like throw them into the dumpster instead of being able to like back up to something and kind of just like, you know, safely move those a little bit better. They do the best they can with what they have in a safe manner, but we could get to the bottom of the safety triangle there and engineer in some safety. We also have an underutilized old generator building over here and a garage space that can be converted for more useful space, whether it's for storage or anything of that manner to support our stockroom. And we're also gonna be displacing this shed over here that we currently use for a lot of the water stuff if we add a garage. So we would be fixing that up over on this side of the map. And then we would need to additionally upgrade our generator. Our generator is undersized for the facility right now as of our, we basically have electric heat there sometimes in the winter between all of the computer and data center and everything else that's set up in that building. You're kind of zoning what you can use and can't use on emergency generation. An upgraded roof is necessary. We have competing parking spaces. It's very, very frequent that this whole parking lot is full. Not to mention, we also have fleet vehicles that are all parked within this garage, this garage, and all over the sides of the building. It would allow for some more stormwater treatment. That would be helpful as we are located on our watershed. And then a potential sound barrier as well. Right now, our crews are having to wear sound protection when the city police range is in use. So there are some relatively affordable options to help with that. Where you can do some sound barriers so people aren't required to wear hearing protection. This is the cost breakdown of everything. The renovation of the facility is included in one cost here and then the site work. So that has to do with like building the road and grading everything there and putting in stormwater treatment. These are broken out in the report that I have, but overall, you can see that the area upgrades plus the site work and escalation over the next five years to be able to get the project done in engineering and design. The total, the gross total is twenty-three million, eight hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred forty dollars. So that's why we're looking for a twenty-four million dollar bond. And this is just a breakdown, a final recap of our sewer, water, and electric facilities. Sewer, we're looking for nine point oh three million, water, ten point five million, and electric, the twenty-four million dollars to support the facility. And I can take any questions you guys may have at this time.
Questions on electric? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, for, remind me, I thought we received a presentation on some of the things that are included in this, these upgrades previously. And I don't remember what that presentation was for, from Bill, we've received.
For the facility?
Yes, you had done a presentation that included the locker room upgrades, the train room upgrades.
Want me to refresh your memory? We work together well as a team. So when I brought this to the UC previously, not looking for bonding approval, just explaining to them what the facility upgrade would look like, Bill spoke on our behalf for it and brought it to you guys just to explain what we were working on.
There was really mostly a summary of what we're at, right? So really, our cup is runneth over, right? So we really have no space. We're sharing, the locker room is currently also the lunchroom. You saw, we probably have thirty, thirty-five people. You think about the electric team, it's the linemen, substation, project management, the stockroom gentlemen that work up in there also use the space. We have one shower for all of them and two stalls for the bathroom, right? So we really have gone, we've, we've reached the end of space. The fleet, we have vehicles that park outside normally now because they can't get into the garage. We don't have the space in there. Weather permitting, you know, so if it's snowing, we can't protect the fleet. It's difficult for the guys to load up equipment into the trucks. My conversation earlier was just in general that it's just that we really need to invest in the facility and we need the space.
So previously, we didn't approve funding for that section of the project, but you were presenting things that you were gonna be looking for funding in the near future, correct?
The current hardships, yep, absolutely.
So this is in addition to that, this is encompassing all of those things though into the bonding?
That's correct.
Right. We have, we have not come to utility commission nor council for money, for money for any of these projects in the past. This is all brand-new requests.
And I, at the time, I remember saying, you know, because I had, had the same concerns with the police department. They previously had completely inadequate space for the female officers. And obviously, you guys have a similar problem and for similar reason. It was built a long time ago. So it makes sense. And obviously, we need adequate space for people to change and shower and do all those things because of the work that you do in the electric department. And I think, you know, we discussed that with the emergencies, when we have emergencies and people are working overnight to solve these problems, the only way we can keep that ability is by making sure we have the facilities for it. So obviously, we reviewed a good chunk of the, the electric project previously and asked some questions then. But I think, you know, it's smart to try to look at forward at this. I've been in that conference room. It is, for the amount of staffing we have, it is a small conference room. And I think the meeting I was in was not like an all-hands meeting or anything and it was full. I mean, there was a lot of people in there. So, you know, I'm in favor of making sure that we can adequately house the staff we have and provide a good working environment, especially, in particular, our utility staff are frequently working at odd hours or emergencies, last minute and all of those things. So this is a very thorough presentation and I really appreciate it.
Sorry if it's wordy.
Oh, no. The thing is, it has, there's a lot of information here. And you said this is available on the Grattan Utilities website, some of this information?
The presentation or the reports. So the report for sewer is available publicly online. As far, the water stuff is all built off of our asset management program. And then the electric facility plan I have, that's not published online because it wasn't done through like a grant or anything like that, but we do have that reported as well.
And then for the cost of service studies and all of those are online as well, right? If a resident wanted to look at, you know, the financial protections of all of those things?
Are those made publicly online, the presentations? Yeah, the cost of service study ones?
Only as we get them approved.
Right. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out that a lot of the information you guys bring to council is publicly available on your website, because I have looked it up after the fact. When I'm not near my tablet, I can just go on your website and find it. So I just want to encourage people, this is, there's a lot of information here. And a lot of it is on the GU website. If people are curious to, they can go on there and find that information and the specifics. So I just wanted to encourage them to do that. And then they can send us questions and we can ask them, but there's a lot of detailed information. Thank you so much for preparing it, because I can just imagine how many hours this took to, to prepare. But it is so useful in us making good decisions, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, anyone else? Counselor Norris?
The building you're talking about, how old is it?
It, so the building we're looking for upgrade on the wing is, was built in nineteen seventy-five, so it's fifty years old this year.
Okay. Was there thought to, roll with me, Bill? Excuse logistics, like just doing a brand-new building?
The footprint is limited on that site. We have to have consideration with our water treatment plant as well. If you were to break up your operation, there's a lot of conveniences of being located on the same property. We share our stockroom personnel. All of our material is stocked there. So like labor hours and everything, considering all of that is to be taken into consideration. We have other places that we entertain the idea of maybe doing like a transformer yard or this, that, the other. It's just not the most cost-effective option for the utility, excuse me for stammering. So it was looked into, not as far as the entire facility, but for some satellite locations for some of the stuff we're offering here. With the water treatment plant being there, we always have to take into consideration if they were to need a new treatment process due to DPH standards or EPA standards changing. You really only want to expand your physical building footprint so much. So this kind of does that. It doesn't expand your building footprint too impactfully to your watershed, but also meets the needs that we need for a growing company.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I must have, my brain's tied. So the escalation, five percent?
Five percent over five years.
Why five years and not four?
So essentially, we would have to go out for engineering and design and then you would build out over your next two to three years. Everything we do is in five-year cycles. Our bonding is supported in five-year cycles. So the idea is that all of this, including engineering and design and full build, would be within five years. So your spend would be over five years.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any motion carries an ase.
Thank you all.
I will. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Kelsey. And thank you, staff, for coming out. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, council.